Okay, I'll call the order today's meeting for May 16th, 2019. In a lot of the events from the last week, I'd like to change the order of the beginning of our meeting, and I'd like to honor one of our own, Riley Howell. In a few moments, I'd like to start the meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the invocation, and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Riley was a very, very brave young man, who has left us with an extraordinary example of heroic selfless sacrifice, which is described in John 15:13. While I did not know Riley personally, I do know some of his family, and I know that a parent should never have to bury a child. I would ask that we remember that the county member and everyone here remember his family in prayer in the weeks ahead, and that you would pray for peace and comfort that only comes from the Lord. Would anyone else like to make a comment this morning? Okay. Okay, at this time, if you would, let's rise for a moment of silence.
Gracious Father, as we come to you, we offer this prayer of thanksgiving, knowing that we have life and freedom today because so many have sacrificed so much. But in Haywood County this morning, we pray with thanksgiving for Riley Howell, for the example of sacrifice that he is to all of us. But we pray, oh Lord, for his family and loved ones who grieve his loss, as we also pray for the family of Reed Parlier in Midland, and also for the family of Jordan Sheldon, the officer in Mooresville who was shot down in these past days, and so many others. Lord, we pray that you will give us grace to accept things as they are, but to work for the change that's necessary, that they might be as they ought to be. Bless, oh Lord, we pray that tragedies like the ones suffered over the weekend in this past week would become fewer in number, that school, places of education in school would be safe places, that our officers who patrol the streets could do so, Lord, in service to us without fear of their lives. Father, may we all recognize the need for sacrifice, in order that we may have security and peace, for these things cannot come without pain. And so we make our appeal to you and ask your blessing on this meeting, and that all of us may conduct ourselves, whether in this meeting or outside of it this day, in a way that will reflect your goodness and grace and your mercy, that we may show forth the goodness of the Lord in the land of the living, and that we may live each day, ready and willing to do all that it takes, that the best of us and the least of us may have opportunity to succeed and to fulfill your will on this earth. But for those who have given their lives for us, we thank you, for we are not worthy. But we pray you will make us the people that we ought to be, for we pray in the name of the one who gave himself for us. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, to the republic of which you stand, on the nation of the governed, in this world, for liberty and justice.
Okay, the first order of business this morning, we have no public hearing, so it will be a public comment session, and I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone present that would like to make a comment this morning? I have no one signed up. Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns, and Mark, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Brandon?
I do not.
Okay. I just have a couple of constituent concerns. One is the, Patrick Johnson and Joey Webb have been able to put a video on the website for the measles, that describes measles, and it's a very informative video, and I would ask that those in the public that would like to view that, they can go on to our website and view that. It's very well put together, and I appreciate Patrick and Joey working on that to get that out and get the word out on, you know, get the proper information out to everyone. Also, this Saturday will be the letter carriers' food drive, and I just want to remind the public of that. The food that's collected goes to Haywood Christian Ministries Salvation Army Community Kitchen and Open Door. So if you put that at your mailbox, the letter carriers will pick it up, and if you'd like to volunteer for that, you can contact Haywood Christian Ministries, and they have volunteers that go out and do that. I forget now how many thousand pounds of food that they collect, but it's a really good, a really good program, and it feeds a lot of people throughout the year or so. But if everyone would remember that, and maybe place your items at the mailbox there on Saturday. Our next item of business will be our administrative agency reports presentation, and there'll be the introduction of our new in county employees, and I'll let Brian go with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This month, we actually have several new employees, if you'll stand and remain standing until I'll, are introduced. Lisa Massey from the Tax Assessor's Office, Hannah Shaheen from Health and Human Services, Elizabeth Connor from Health and Human Services, Valerie Wood from Health and Human Services, and Rosalia McCady, who we didn't get to introduce last month. Welcome.
Okay, thank you all for coming this morning, and we appreciate y'all being willing to work for Haywood County. If y'all need to leave, you can, but if you want to stay, you can stay. I don't think it'll be a very long meeting. Okay, I don't have any discussion or adjustment to the agenda. Does anybody have anything at this time? Okay. Okay, we'll move to our consent agenda. The first is to request approval of the April 15th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or anything to those, or additions?
No.
Okay. The next will be a request, request of budget approval of budget amendments from the General Fund, HHSA Community Health, which is a $2,498 grant from the Haywood Health Foundation to provide smoking cessation tools such as nicotine replacement patches, gum, and lozenges to pregnant and postpartum patients. From the General Fund, HHSA Community Health is a $16,332 grant received through Macon County for creating a healthy, skilled workforce in western North Carolina. The third item of the consent agenda is the request approval of the purchase of a 2019 Ford Transit Connect XLT from Taylor Ford for the Information Technology Department in the amount of $26,954 to be paid for from budgeted funds, and I believe they're replacing an old Crown Vic with this vehicle. The fourth item is to request approval to accept a $15,000 grant from the state of North Carolina for the purchase of environmental emergency equipment and approve, approval of budget amendment for public safety emergency management in the amount of $15,000. And this is from, I believe, Representative, former Representative Mike Clampett got that for our EMS. Fifth is a request approval for the county manager to review and sign a contract with Inner Work Engineering for privacy and security risk assessment, policy mitigation, and audit preparation for the Health and Human Services Agency in the amount of $34,190 to be paid for from budgeted funds. Sixth item of the consent agenda is to request approval of a contract with McGill Engineering for services associated with firewall repair at the law enforcement center in the amount of $31,000 to be paid from budgeted funds. And then the seventh item of the consent agenda and the final item is to request approval of the budget amendment from the Capital Project Fund for the county purchase repairs replacement of $31,000 to cover the engineering portion of the LEC, which is the Law Enforcement Center of Firewall Repairs. Okay, does anyone have any questions about anything in the consent agenda this morning? Okay, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion second. Second, Brandon. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda, which is to request approval for a budget amendment for inner, internal service funds, I'm sorry, internal service funds, general fund, health insurance, $1,304,95 to cover increased costs for health insurance from a combination of fund balance and the internal service funds, and increased revenue source in the general fund. And we have our finance director, Julie Davis. Hi, Julie.
Good morning. This was a little involved, so I thought it might need a little explanation. We're affecting three funds with this particular budget amendment. We have a shortage in our health insurance fund. That's where we pay our health insurance claims. We're basically self-insured, so we pay the claims as they come in. It looks like we're going to be about $1.3 million short this year, and you probably remember in the past few years, we've come toward the end of the year and had to put more money in that health insurance fund, and basically, the money going into that fund is either a transfer from the general fund, or it's actually a health insurance expense from the general fund. Last year, when we thought we were going to be going over, and we did a budget amendment at the end of the year for about $900,000, we ended up with $400,000 left over in the health insurance fund last year. So we're taking that $400,000 that rolled into the health insurance fund balance, and we're appropriating that as part of this $1.3 million. In addition to that, we have a workers' comp fund that's much like our health insurance fund, we're self-insured for workers' comp, and we typically keep a little bit of a fund balance in that fund. We had about $600,000 in the workers' comp fund. We had appropriated $275,000 for workers' comp in the current year. So that leaves us comfortably about $300,000 we can move from the workers' comp fund, from that fund balance, into the health insurance fund. So that's going to take up part of it. That's $400,000 fund balance in health insurance and $300,000 from workers' comp. So we're still short of our $1.3 million. We do have a little bit of revenue coming into the health insurance fund in the form of dependent payments that we had budgeted a little less than are coming in, so we have added on dependent care, we've added about $160,000 of money that is coming in from outside. I mean, that's from employees who are paying for their dependent coverage, so it's coming out of their paychecks for their dependent coverage. That amount is coming in higher, so we're appropriating that amount. Now, the effect on the general fund, we're about $400,000 short to get to our $1.3 million. So the effect on the general fund was to, well, there's two things we're doing. We have retiree health insurance that we have talked about in the past, and I think we're going to talk about it at the work session this afternoon. That is costing the county a little bit more than we had expected, so we're going to add in the general fund $275,000 to help cover that retiree health insurance that is actually a county cost, that we transfer into the health insurance fund to pay some retiree health insurance costs. And that is going to be part of that $400,000. We're actually going to hit, hit $125,000 in the general fund also, and we're probably going to hit that in non-departmental. And we're going to pay for this $400,000 from increased revenue from investment earnings. We've had a pretty good year in investment earnings this year, so we have an extra $400,000 that we can use to appropriate, to help cover some of these costs that we're having to go for health insurance. I know that's a lot of information, but I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
We appreciate it. Appreciate all the information.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions for Julie?
Do you think this will get us through the end of the year?
I'm hoping it'll get us through the end of the year, and I think it will. And one of the reasons that there's a good chance it will get us through the end of the year, as being self-insured, we have a point where we actually have true insurance kick in. We call it reinsurance or stop-loss, and we are hitting that point to where some of those claims that are coming in are actually being covered by the reinsurance piece. So we expect that this will get us through the end of June. We hope it will.
Is there a way to lower that?
There are a number of things that we have been talking about over the past few years, as far as lowering our costs and changing our programs and doing some wellness, and I think we're going to get into that at the budget work session. There are some things we are going to have to do to lower the cost.
Well, what I was curious about, I'm familiar with the reinsurance, Farm Bureau does that to some degree, but can you get a lower, to where they kick in sooner, to where it's not costing us so much that it's not going to break the bank?
We certainly do. We negotiate that every year. For example, we used to have our stop-loss hit at $80,000, and then it would cover everything over $80,000 for one person. That's very expensive, so we have, over the years, bumped that up to $125,000 incrementally, so we're paying a little bit less than we were when it was $80,000. But you have to, you have to look at the number of times you go over that stop-loss compared to the amount of premium you're paying extra, so it's a constant kind of juggling thing that we do once a year. We do that negotiation once a year, and we're getting ready to get involved in those negotiations for next year. We'll be doing that this spring.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, I know this is a large amount, but Julie's covered it pretty well, has been able to find funds from different departments, and we will be discussing medical insurance during our work session that's coming up, and unfortunately, we're going to have to, well, we do have some, some things that we'll be considering to hopefully affect that for, in the, in the next year. So can I, I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget request of $1,304,95 to cover the increased costs for health insurance from a combination of fund balance in the internal service funds and increased revenue source in the general fund.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the second item of regular agenda would be the request approval to hire additional staff for convalescent medical calls within Haywood County. Did you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me, let me just say that I have, I have met with, I met with the investigator that looked into the Haywood County Rescue Squad, and I've also, you know, in, at the beginning of the year, the Rescue Squad said that they would not be doing convalescent transport, and our EMS has been having to pick that slack up, which has put a burden on our EMS. We currently, last month, the EMS did 156 calls for convalescent transport, and the Rescue Squad did zero. So we, we need to fill that gap. I believe that the county's the best one to handle that at this time. We can't, we can't have some of our most vulnerable citizens, which are elderly mostly, for convalescent transports, you know, kind of lingering or languishing in hospitals and putting, it puts off the time when they can get back to their home, or whatever their home environment is for them at that time. So we've looked at staffing, our convalescent transport, and just going ahead and doing it from the county standpoint. So Brian, if you want to take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, if okay with the board, I'd ask Mr. Harkel Road to come up from the hospital to say a few, few words about how important the convalescent transport is to our hospital.
Okay. Welcome, Rod, and congratulations on your award that was in the paper. Yeah, that's very much deserved.
You know, the EMS is crucial to our success in, in the community, but the convalescent is very important on the hospital side. We have seen, since some of the changes, a lot of delays in trying to get patients back to the facilities they need, and in some cases, to even transport them to outside of the community as well. You know, when we look at how important this is, is from the hospital, and we are 100% on board with this. I did get an opportunity to look at some of the, when you guys were looking at ideas of what direction to go. I've seen that this is going to be a successful model. I think the challenge is, you know, for us, it's a seven-day-a-week where we move patients to and from, so it's going to be crucial that, you know, that you have enough FTEs to be able to do that. And I know that when I looked at some of the financials, when the hospital looking at it, that six FTEs were around the magic number to kind of transition. Another thing for us is the hospital, we, we've budgeted about $45,000 to help support when patients maybe are self-pays, or when they, we need them to go out of county. So there'll be some opportunities also where we can actually pay for some of this as well. I know that from a reimbursement standpoint, it looks fairly good, but also there's some additional opportunities where we can support as well. So we're, we're really on board with this. I think the question that, you know, that we look at is how will the staffing side, we probably would, some of our patients require a higher level of movement and need a higher license, so especially when they have to, and we have to pay for them to go out of the county. So all I would ask, that you would look at the acuity of the patient, and even though that at all times they're not the highest, the mix of what you would feel is necessary to take care. And the only reason I, I know a little bit of this is because I had the opportunity to sit in on a session to look at the difference, and I looked at the financial, because the hospital was, if worst-case scenario, was going to try to help out as best as they could, but I think that having a bigger workforce, putting it all together with the EMS, that there will be, this will be a successful for the county, also from the hospital standpoint.
Thank you, Rod. Anybody have any questions for Rod? Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you, Rod. Okay. So do we need to vote to do the convalescents, Rod? Is that what, and then?
I think we, at this point, we need to, to approve the hiring of the positions. At a later meeting, we have some of the, the technical aspects for us to, to change some ordinances for the county to do this on a permanent basis, but if, if the board chooses, we can go ahead and post those positions and start the hiring process, and at the meeting on the 20th, to do those technical changes that allows us to take over the convalescent transport, so.
Okay. And I do want to apologize to the staff, but I didn't want to put, place this on the agenda on Wednesday. We decided to place this on the agenda so we can get moving on it, because right now, our EMS is understaffed, and they're having to do that, so, and no, no one else is doing it. So we had looked at mountain projects possibly doing the, the convalescent transports, and then we looked at us doing it, and maybe even a private person doing it, but I think keeping it in the county is probably the best, because we're going to look out for our own. And so at this point, now, we, we also had gotten information of, on the six FTEs, we can do six, I guess, basic EMTs, or we can do three paramedics and three basics, or we can do six paramedics. But either way, we need to approve six. So I had Brian check with our, we, we're also doing a study. Brandon and I asked the county manager to look into our EMS and, and to, and our structure and our staffing to see if we were adequate. So Brian had hired someone he knew from Gaston County to come in and look at our staffing for the EMS, and I asked his opinion on how he would staff it, and then the medical director on staffing, and I think you.
Yeah. The, the basic EMTs are more than qualified to do the convalescent transport, and that's the, the minimum the state says that we're required to have. Steve Allen is the consultant that does EMS studies across the state, and he said if he was building the program from the ground up, he'd, he would do a mixture of paramedics and, and basic EMTs. That gave them the most comfort. And for the vast majority of the calls, the convalescent program would run, that may be considered overkill, but there are growing periods of time that we need backup 911, and in those cases, having a paramedic on the truck would, would, would be, you know, a different level of service. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
I know, Mark, you had an opinion on, on the EMTs.
Yeah, I think EMTs would be better, because you kind of, if you put paramedics on, the only real issue is somebody's got to haul them out. You can bring people into the hospital all the time, but if you have people that need to go somewhere and you haul them out, it's cheaper to do EMTs. They don't have to be boarded, which means they don't have to have the delayed amount of time getting them approved. They could put them to work a lot faster, even before the end of this budget year, if you choose to go that route, which would help get them off the ground earlier. You don't have a huge amount of equipment that you need in order to be able to get that ambulance working. I've talked to Jeff Powell with OMS, and he's perfectly okay with us running a convalescent at EMT level. If they need to use 911, they have a paramedic-level supervisor. The paramedic-level supervisor can get on that ambulance, take the equipment onto the ambulance, and operate any call that happens in Haywood County with their equipment. Short-term basis, that's not a problem. I talked to him about longevity-wise, and he said, you know, if you were doing that every day, that would be an issue. I think if we started at EMT level, give it six months, see how many times it's actually being used for 911, then we can always change the staffing to meet that need. But to jump straight into paramedic without really knowing what we're up against, who knows? I think it's a waste of money if we go straight to paramedic level.
Anybody else?
I guess a question I have is, do we know, I don't know if Greg's the right guy to ask this, or if Brian, do we know how many backup calls is going to be needed roughly, based off of data from last year? Do you know roughly?
I'll defer to somebody from EMS. I don't want to give a wrong number out.
And along with that, I guess a question for the hospital, Rod. I don't know if you guys feel more comfortable having that paramedic onboard, or if it violates a, you know, I don't know how many, how many times we need that extra help. I know you're saying that there are supervisors available for the short term, if I understood you correctly, Mark. So maybe it's a trial basis, we do the EMTs. I don't know. I'll listen to you other guys' opinion, but just a couple of questions, you know. I didn't know how many times it was needed, or how the hospital felt, you know, about having that extra paramedic onboard.
Do you, do you want to come up, Rod?
I hate to put you on the spot, but that's part of it.
I mean, I see the rationale about reducing costs. And the only reason I know some of the financials we looked at, it's probably about a $22,000 cost to shift, I mean, because we have EMTs in our emergency room. For us, the paramedic is a higher level, especially when we're having to spend money to send people, maybe time out of the county. So I feel like the additional revenue source that the hospital will be able to give will overset that $22,000 cost. So for me, I mean, it's kind of like having RN and LPN in, in the hospital. Our LPNs do a great job, the RN can do a little more, even though there's cases where I could use the LPN, save costs, but I think in this situation, it's just from some of the transfer, the higher-level care. I know on convalescent, there's not necessarily always higher level, but to me, I also look, if you will, my opinion, if you have a higher bunch at higher level, you can shift those across to support the other end, reducing your overtime. So my challenge would be, if you hired at a higher level, you're running a 15% to 20% turnover rate, could you reduce your turnover by having a higher-scale pool to therefore save the county long-term? That would be some questions that I would ask, but I would go higher in if it was me.
Yeah, I guess that's some of the questions as well, you know. If you have a paramedic, you know, are they going to want to move on, or, you know, convalescent may be not what they want to do. Also, like he said, there is an additional cost, I realize that, but it sounds like that we can overcome that with what the hospital's got budgeted. But, Mark, you go.
One thing, I think we're confusing two different things. When you send somebody to a nursing home or to their residence, how often do they have ALS, ALS IVs, meds, monitors, anything that a paramedic is going to provide? When you're sending them home, or sending them to a skilled nursing facility, how often does that happen?
I don't have the exact numbers on it. I would probably say... I would probably say 20% less of the time, 30% that they would have a higher-level. Mine's more when we have to take them, we get patients that are in a nursing home that are going to be outside of the county, or they maybe are going on oxygen. Just from the risk standpoint, the hospital sometimes will try to drive them at a higher level of care, just so from a risk standpoint. But you're right, it's a lower, it's a lower number. I'm not going to, you know, I agree from the county standpoint, go with a lesser FTE. We would do that in our business model, too. But I think in this case, when you look at the cost and then the opportunity to utilize the FTEs across the service line, if I was managing, I would try to reduce my overtime off cost. But I know what you're saying, it's a smaller number of, you could go with EMTs to manage that. But I would look at the bigger-scale model of this as the county continues to grow, which we know it is. If you have these FTEs in your bucket now, as you transition in the future, you are already in a position to be able to manage a higher level of emergencies and issues that have come. So I think you're preparing for what you know is coming. You have a low risk at 22,000, and you've got the hospital that has some piece, so I don't think there's a lot of risk to the citizens. And that's just my two cents.
Sounds more like the hospital needs interfacility. Going from Haywood to Mission is when most of the time, paramedics are going to be using their monitors and using their skills. We have seven ambulances for that. Going back to nursing homes, going to residences, is going to be the primary bulk of what this crew does. And they're not going to be hauling these things. If it becomes an issue and they need somebody advanced-level, if that's less than 30% of the time, you've got seven more paramedic ambulances. Somebody else can do that one as opposed to sending the convalescent. I think we're talking about two different things in trying to make it paramedic level instead of make it EMT.
Do you have anything, Tommy, that you want to?
Well, I do say I've had several discussions with people and tried to see both sides of this issue as far as staffing. I think we're all in agreement, we need to provide this service for Haywood County. You know, we have 63,000 people here, and they're going to, unfortunately, you know, with other agency has had trouble, and, you know, it's been punted over to us. And, you know, I hear, I try to educate myself on these votes. So, looking at it from my standpoint, and, you know, I came, like most people in Haywood County, you've got a little agricultural background in you, even if you were out pulling weeds in your garden for your mom and dad. But I've bought small tractors before, and you can do a lot of work with a small tractor. But you can't do the work with a small tractor that you can with a big tractor. I can do the small tractor work with a big tractor. Truck's same way. I've got a little truck. It's pretty nice to use for a trash hauler, but I can't do big work with that little truck. And I don't like the idea of painting myself into a corner. And I do look at the big picture, and I appreciate everybody's concern, but this is more of the staffing, it's kind of more of an administrative deal. I like Mark's idea about going six months on a trial basis. There's merit in that. And then, no shame in upping the level. But looking at our county residents, and also, this is not the funding for this, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but this is kind of a unique situation for a government-run business. It's a profitable enterprise, am I correct? From the spreadsheet you gave us.
We hope so. We think that we will generate more revenue every year than we spend on this at the current staffing levels.
So I do like the flexibility. I like the idea of going six months trial. So I'm going to vote to do this, so, but the nuts and bolts of it, we've had a good discussion, and I've certainly heard a lot of people's opinion. But I personally like the added flexibility to having the ability to go up for the cost. You know, I do like that idea and being able to have some flexibility. And the interfacility transfers, I know we had some discussions about interfacility transfers. That's Mission to Haywood, Haywood to Jackson County, and so on and so forth. Now, that situation does require a paramedic, is that correct?
Most of the time.
Most of the time, so. I like the flexibility for the cost. You know, you look at how much bang are you getting for your buck? And, you know, for that extra cost for a paramedic, for the sake of our citizens, and it's definitely not going to, the proposal that I saw is not going to affect our taxpayers. It's supposed to be a self-sustaining enterprise with that extra cost for a paramedic coming off the profit side of the ledger, so. But that forecast, I guess you guys know pretty much how much is going to be coming in, so. I've looked at both sides, trust me. I've tried to prepare myself for this vote, because I know it's crucial, crucial for Haywood County, crucial for the residents, and it's failed back to us to provide that service, so, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Just another comment. I know that, I spent a lot of time as well, spoke to Mark over the weekend. I actually spoke to another director in another county about it, just to check, to see what his opinion was. I know we checked with the auditor, see what his opinion was. And a lot of information, you know, to gather over the weekend to try to make the best decision. But, you know, me and Tommy had a discussion. I think it is appropriate that we vote to do it, you know, and then we let Brian do his job and make the decision on what to do, actually. So we can come back to you, Brian, and say, what's going on here? How do you like that pressure?
Much obliged, thank you.
But seriously, you know, that's what you do, and I think we vote on the policy, and then we let you be responsible for that. So again, that's just my opinion. A 22,000 difference there, from what we understand, is not coming out of the taxpayers' pocket. It is money that should be brought in, so it's just whether or not we need to do that extra level or not.
Okay, we, I just lost my train of thought. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we hire the six employees to handle the convalescent transport. So am I hearing that you guys want to do the three paramedics and the three EMT basics?
You know, again, I don't know if that's what I'm saying or not. I think that we ought to hire six and then leave it up to Brian, what those six needs to be, you know, working with Greg, if he's comfortable with that, that would be my vote. I mean, I hear what Mark's saying. Maybe it's a trial basis we do. Guess the question is, what do you do if those other three, once that trial period's over with?
I'd like to see them put something in place as quickly as possible, but I also meant to mention, while ago, Rutherford County and Lincoln County both run a dual system within EMS, and I'd like to see that looked at. I mean, I'm in agreement to hire six people, and I'll have to trust your judgment to look into which ones is necessary, but I would like those to be looked at to see, because they both run convalescent within EMS, but they run them at EMT level, and they make it work every day. So that's what I would like to see.
Well, why don't we, okay, I'll entertain a motion that we hire six employees to handle the convalescent transport, and we'll let Brian decide. Is that okay?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? Is that clear as mud?
Yes, sir. Right at you.
The balls in your corner.
All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's good. And I think, I'm really glad that the citizens will be served by this. We don't need, I think, I think I read where in down east somewhere, they had a similar for-profit that just let the county know eight days before that they weren't going to do it. And I know it's been a burden on the hospital, so I just wanted to get this out of the way so we can move forward, and the hospital can move forward, and the county can move forward. So we appreciate that, everybody, everybody's input. Okay.
One other comment. I did make several calls and ask questions, and one person I talked to, it is tough when the hospital discharges an elderly patient, and they don't have a way home. They sit around up there two or three hours, and I know the hospital's, you know, you're busy, and they're wanting to go back to the nursing facility or go home, and we need a dependable, a dependable mode of transportation. It's a problem, so. Everybody I talked to said, please help. You know, everybody I talked to, so.
Okay. Thank you all. Okay, the last item of our business's appointments is to request approval of appointments to boards and committees. I'm tongue-tangled today. Our county manager, Brian Moorhead, is the reappointment of Dr. Molly Harrington Weaver to the Health and Human Services Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a reappointment, like you said. Dr. Harrington Weaver is a pediatrician here. She's been a pediatrician for 17 years. She's committed to care for children, improving their lives, and she has been unanimously approved by the Nominations and Personnel Committee on April 4th.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we appoint Dr. Molly Harrington Weaver to the Health and Human Services Board. And Brandon, you're on that board, I believe.
Yep. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have no closed session today. Is there any other business before the board? And we're going to have, let me just say, right before we adjourn, we're going to have a brief recess to set up for our work session that immediately follows this meeting. So I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn our regular meeting.
I'm moved. We adjourn our regular meeting.
Yes, second.
Second.
Second, my Mark. All those in favor indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.